So he just waited. But I meant to send it to Boston because the deadline is... Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. I am the City Council President. Viewers can watch a City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence your cellphones, electronic devices. Thank you. I'd also like to ask everyone to be respectful of each other and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you'll be escorted out. Also, according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please?
Counselor Royer, Counselor Baker, and Counselor Bark, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Rell.
I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Mr. Clerk, please ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Fernandez Anderson is present.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, please ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Mejia is present, Counselor Rell is present. This week's clergy is invited by City Councilor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. Tanya Fernandez Anderson, would you please come to the podium and introduce our clergy for today?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you, Council President Flynn. Today, I have a very special person to introduce to you. I'd like to introduce you to Imam Ahmed Barry. Imam Barry was born in Senegal and is happily married with four children. On the side of his car dealership business, he hails from Sierra Leone, where he gives chutbar as well, where he is an Imam. And today, he likes to give what we call a chutbar or sermon, but rather prayer for us and our stakeholders across Massachusetts as well. It's our practice to not gloat in or to talk too much about our good deeds or charity work. We believe in Islam. We believe that charity work should be private. It shouldn't be televised. It shouldn't be talked about or boasting, that it should just be between that person that's doing the work and God. And so, the Imam, of course, has asked me not to talk about all the things that I want to gloat and boast about him. But Inshallah, God willing, I ask that God rewards the Imam today for all of his good deeds and accept our fast. And again, Happy Ramadan to all. Please welcome Imam Ahmed Barry.
Thank you. Actually, you don't have to stand, but thank you so much. Please. It's okay. All right. So I'm going to recite for you the Quran, which is in Arabic, and then I will also read out the translation and tell you its meaning. It'll probably take about five, six minutes, if that's okay for everyone. All right. [speaking Arabic] [speaking Arabic] [speaking Arabic] Amin. [speaking Arabic] [speaking Arabic] Translation. Say, He is Allah the One. Allah, the absolute. He begets not, nor was He begotten. And there is nothing comparable to Him. Say He is One, that God is One, the absolute. He doesn't have children. He doesn't have a mother. He doesn't have a father. He doesn't have offspring. He is the creator of everything which exists. And there is none like Him. He is not a human being. We don't look like Him. He doesn't look like us. And there's nothing like Him. In another verse in the Quran, Allah says... Actually, another chapter of the Quran, it says... [speaking Arabic] So in the Quran, God, Allah says... [speaking Arabic] As time is going... As time is going... [speaking Arabic] That human beings are at loss or in lost... Sorry. As time is going, human beings are lost, except those who believe in God, and they do good works, and they encourage to do good and encourage and recommend patience. And last but not least, in another verse in the Quran, Allah says... [speaking Arabic] That the Quran is a book of God. [speaking Arabic] For those who have consciousness. [speaking Arabic] For those who believe in the unseen. Who believe in the unseen, that this is the book of truth. So ask God, the Almighty, to guide us all and to give us the best of this life and the next life. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Belief?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the human republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Aman. Honored to have you here today. Mr. Clerk, can you please ensure the record is reflected in noting that Counselor Royer is present? We're onto the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion at this time, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. As presented, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Mr. Clerk, can you please ensure the record is reflected in noting that City Councilor Kendra Lara is present? Communications from Huron in the May. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0760 to 0782, please.
Document number 0760. Message in order for annual appropriation and tax order for fiscal year 2024, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023. Document number 0761. Message in order for annual appropriation for the school department for fiscal year 2024, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023. Document number 0762. Message in order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits, also known as OPEB Liability Trust Fund, established under Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023. Document number 0763. Message in order approving an appropriation of $1,800,000 from the city's capital grant fund to address the impact of transportation, network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, or any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation network services in the city. Such funds will be transferred and credited to the capital grant fund from revenues received from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023. Document number 0764. Message in order for your approval in order authorizing the city of Boston enter into one or more leases, lease purchase, or installment sale agreements in fiscal year 2024 in an amount not to exceed $39 million. These funds are to be used by various city departments for the acquisition of equipment and furtherance of their respective governmental functions. The list of equipment includes computer equipment, software and hardware, motor vehicles and trailers, ambulances, firefighting equipment, office equipment, telecommunications equipment, photocopying equipment, medical equipment, school and educational equipment, school buses, parking meters, street lighting installation, traffic signal equipment, and equipment functionally related components of the foregoing, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023. Document number 0765. Message in order approving an appropriation of $29,405,000 from the city's capital grant fund in order to provide funding for various transportation and public realm improvements. The funds shall be credited to the capital grant fund from the parking meter fund, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023. Document number 0766. Message in order authorizing an appropriation order in the amount of $27,500,000 from Surplus Property Disposition Fund, credited to the capital fund for planning, design, and construction for projects, the animal shelter, old statehouse, BHA decarbonization, and Harrison Ave, Boston One and Sewer Commission operations, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023. Document number 0767. Message in order for your approval and appropriation order in the amount of $657,000, $657,110,000 for the various capital improvement purposes for city departments, including the Boston Centers for Youth and Families, Department of Innovation and Technology, the Environment, Fire, Parks and Recreation, Police, Property Management, Public Works, and Transportation Departments, Mayor's Office of Housing, Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture, Boston Public Library, Boston Housing Authority, Boston Planning and Development Agency, and the Boston Public Health Commission, filed in the office of the city clerk April 10, 2023. Document number 0768. Message in order authorizing an appropriation in order in the amount of $328,160,000 for various capital improvement purposes for the Boston Public Schools, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023. Message in order... Document number 0769. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Law Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 to purchase goods and services for repairs to city property. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from recoveries for damages to city property caused by third parties. The Law Department will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $300,000. Document number 0770. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Tourism Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 to purchase goods and services to support events and programming on and around City Hall Plaza to advance tourism and promote participation in public celebrations, civic, and cultural events. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from payments for the use of City Hall Plaza pursuant to City of Boston Code Ordinance 11-7.14. The Mayor's Office of Tourism will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Document number 0771. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater. The revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from rental fees for use of the Strand Theater. The Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $300,000. Document number 0772. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 to purchase goods and services to support public art to enhance the public realm throughout the city of Boston. The revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from easements within the public way granted by the Public Improvement Commission. The Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $800,000. Document number 0773. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Distributed Energy Resource Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 to facilitate the purchase of offsets of greenhouse gas emissions, which shall be associated with a portion of the electricity consumed by the city annually, and to operate, maintain, monitor, and expand the city's existing solar arrays and Boston Public Schools' combined heat and power facilities. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from the sale of renewable and alternative energy certificates and demand response program revenues produced by combined heat and power units located at Boston Public School sites and solar renewable energy certificates produced by the city's photovoltaic arrays. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $150,000. Document number 0774. Message in order authorizing a limit on the Environmental Conservation Commission Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 for the purpose of securing outside consultants, including engineers, wetland scientists, wildlife biologists, and other experts, in order to aid in the review of proposed projects to the commission, per the city's ordinance protecting local wetland and promoting climate change adaptation. The revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from fees imposed by the commission for the purpose of securing outside consultants. The Environment Department will be the only department authorized to expand from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $50,000. Document number 0775. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Centers for Youth and Families BCYF Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the City Hall Childcare. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from tuition paid by parents or guardians for children enrolled at the center. Receipts and resulting expenditures for this fund shall not exceed $900,000. Document number 0776. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 to repair and purchase Boston Public Schools' computer technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional software. This revolving fund will be credited with any and all receipts from equipment sales and repair fees for Boston Public School technology. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $1,750,000. Document number 0777. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 to support the maintenance and repair of BPS facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Receipts from lease permit for use and parking fees for BPS facilities will be deposited in this fund. BPS will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall not exceed $2,200,000. Document number 0778. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public School Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 for Boston Public School transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs. This revolving fund shall be credited with revenue received by Boston Public School Department and the provision of transportation to groups and entities for field trips and activities other than transportation to and from schools. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $100,000. Document number 0779. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the Police Department Fitness Center. Revenues for this fund is derived from monthly membership fees. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $125,000. Document number 0780. Message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2024 to support the K-9 Unit's training program for officers and police dogs from non-city or Boston law enforcement agencies. The Special Operating Division will charge tuition and other fees to outside law enforcement agencies for the K-9 Unit. The tuition and other fees by outside agencies will be used to purchase training equipment, certify instructors, update facilities, and provide funds for other training needs not otherwise budgeted. The Special Operations Division will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $125,000. Document number 0781. Message in order authorizing the appropriation of $1,200,000 from the income of the George Francis Parkman Fund. The funds are to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation for the maintenance and improvement of Boston Common and parks in existence since January 12, 1887. Document number 0782. Message in order approving an appropriation of $4,500,000 from the 21st Century Fund, also known as the Public Educational or Government Access, also known as PEG and cable-related fund pursuant to Section 53F, three-quarters of Chapter 44 of the General Laws. The funds may be used to support PEG access services, to monitor compliance with the cable franchise agreement, and for preparation of renewal of the franchise license, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. These dockets, 0760 through 0782, will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0783, please.
Document number 0783. Message in order approving appropriation of $1,269,117 for the administrative and operating expenses of the City of Boston Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2024, and a further appropriation in the amount of $37,214,514 from the Community Preservation Fund, estimated annual revenues for fiscal year 2024, to be appropriated and reserved for future appropriation, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2023.
Thank you. This docket, 0783, will be referred to the Committee on Community Preservation Act. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0784, please.
Document number 0784. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $200,000 in the form of a grant from the Cultural Facilities Fund Grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council. The grant will support construction of the 1965 Freedom Plaza on the Boston Common, which will commemorate the leaders who worked for social and racial equity alongside Coretta Scott King and Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr.
Thank you. This docket, 0784, will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Special Events. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0785.
Document number 0785. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $53,460 in the form of a grant from the BGA fiscal year 20, post-conviction testing of DNA evidence awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the committee, public council services, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund Boston Police Department crime lab staff time for the Massachusetts Innocence and Convention Integrity Collaboration Project.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty, the chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just by way of background, in 2012, Massachusetts passed its first-ever post-conviction DNA and forensic analysis law, creating historic opportunity for cross-agency collaboration to expand the availability of DNA testing to substantiate innocent victims in innocent claims. A coalition of leading Massachusetts criminal justice stakeholders therefore formed a working group to create the infrastructure necessary to fully realize the potential of this new law. This group established a statewide review of cases involving hair, micropuscy, enabled state and county law enforcement departments to inventory physical evidence, streamlined the process for agreed-upon DNA testing in serious violent felony cases, and paid for DNA testing in dozens of violent felony cases. The OGP and BGA funding awarded to the Mass Committee of Public Council Services enables the MSP Crime Lab to complete its Phase Two of its hair review for all counties statewide, expands the working group to include representatives of the Boston Police Department Crime Lab and the Suffolk County District Attorney's Office IRB. Funding and overtime funding system to defray overtime costs for evidence officers and crime lab personnel to catalog DNA evidence for post-conviction cases enables the BPD Crime Lab to conduct a system-wide review to identify all cases from 1980 to 2000 in which physical evidence is suitable for DNA testing, and testing could yield information relevant to the identity of the perpetrator. It enables the Suffolk County District Attorney's Office IRB and the CPCS Committee of Public Council Services to implement a proactive data-driven approach to evaluating categories of cases identified by the working group partnership to expand staffing capacity to litigate accordingly. It facilitates collaboration of stakeholders and working group members to efficiently locate key physical evidence in cases currently under review. It improves evidence documentation and storage in closed cases to ensure the availability of future forensic testing, and it supports ongoing efforts to disseminate and train stakeholders on best practices for evidence location, handling, storage, and also to ensure future access to forensic analysis. As folks may recall, the BPD Crime Lab received $197,450, and this was $53,640, of which has recently been added through a contract amendment, and it's to conduct a system-wide review to identify, as mentioned, cases from 1980 to 2000, and those are cases that review to identify, as mentioned, cases from 1980 to 2000, and those are cases that are eligible for DNA retesting. This grant end date is September 30 of 2023, which was recently extended, so somewhat time is somewhat of the essence to move these funds forward. So as the Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice like to move for suspension and passage of this $53,640 to go to this very important function. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice, seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0785. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Docket 0785 has passed. We're on to reports of public offices and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0786 to 0788, please.
Document number 0786. Notice was received from the city clerk of a vacancy in the District Eight City Council seat effective April 28, 2023. Document number 0787. Communication was received from the Office of Blackmail Advancement of the report entitled "The State of Blackmails in Boston." And document number 0788. Notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of March 29, 2023.
Thank you. These dockets will be placed on file. Reports of committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0574.
Document number 0574. The Committee on the Community Preservation Act, to which was referred on March 15, 2023. Document number 0574. Message in order for an appropriation amount in the amount of $40,676,455 from the fiscal year 2023 Community Preservation Fund revenues for community preservation projects at the recommendation of the City of Boston Community Preservation Committee, also known as CPC, submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Community Preservation Act. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, it's a great day today for the City of Boston, respecting these 56 projects and $40,676,455 to some very worthy projects across the city for the creation of affordable housing, for historic preservation, and for open space. And as folks were at the hearing and had listened to the testimony, I want to first give a shout out to Thaddeus Brown and her team over at the CPC. They do a phenomenal job, and as referenced, many of the applicants have stated feel that they're the only applicant in the process in terms of the attention to detail and care and passion that Thaddeus provides and her team provides to them. Also, it would be remiss if I didn't shout out the five departing members that this body had appointed, and that's Carol Downs, Matt Kiefer, Kanan Thurviganam, and Madalena Tenna, and Ying Yang. They termed off, so the committee is obviously in the process of finding new members to serve in this spot, but it would be remiss if we didn't thank them for their commitment to the Community Preservation Act, to the CPC, and also to the City of Boston. So with that, everyone has on their desk a list of all of the projects. I know a number of my colleagues have attended to offer support and testimony on behalf of projects in their district. And in addition to the current proposals, I had asked that they include a list of funding by neighborhood since the program, its inception. So as you can see and since I've been chair, it is sort of fairly and evenly distributed throughout the community and to my district colleagues. Any additional efforts that you can make in your respective districts to work with your civic association, your friends groups, if there's causes or associations, if there's parks or memorials, or affordable housing projects or historic preservation ideas and issues that are percolating in your districts, feel free to bring them to the forefront and connect them to Thaddeus and her team so we can continue to put these very precious and real dollars to work for them. So without further ado, just want to congratulate my colleagues for all the great things that will be happening in their districts and for my at-large colleagues citywide and through the chair. At this time, we'd move for passage of the committee report with respect to docket 0574. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Community Preservation Act seeks acceptance of the committee report, passage of docket 0574. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 0574. Counselor Arroyo.
Aye.
Counselor Arroyo, aye. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye.
Aye.
Counselor Buck, aye.
Aye.
Counsel Brayden, aye.
Aye.
Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn, yes.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Mehea.
Yes.
Counsel Mehea, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Orell.
Yes.
Counsel Orell. Document number 0574 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
The docket has passed. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Matt is recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0322.
Document number 0322. Order for a hearing regarding the city budget.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This week, we addressed docket, we held a hearing on docket 0322 to discuss how the city budget is addressing equity. And essentially, we've, I'm sorry, I don't have the list of all of my counsel colleagues that show up by memory, I think. Counsel President Flynn, Counsel Murphy, thank you, Counsel Louie Jean, Counsel Lara, and Counsel Mehea, and Counsel Brayden, and Counsel Arroyo. All right. And we essentially discussed how the amendment process or the powers that the counselors hold with the amendment process will work, the schedule for the budget, as well as the different RFIs. I look forward to publicizing all of the RFIs that I've submitted to the administration. I look forward to also working with my colleagues on the amendments, but also publicizing all the amendments that my colleagues suggest, so that we can have a full, transparent process with the community, and look forward to working with the advocates as well to figuring out exactly what we are intending to amend on the budget. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. This docket, 0322, will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0405, please.
Document number 0405. Ordinance to increase the allocated budget for city council staff.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, Chair of the Committee on Rules and Administration. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Brayden. The Committee on Rules and Administration held a working session on Monday, April 10, to discuss the ordinance offered by Counsel Fernandez Anderson about the allocation for the city council budget staff. I want to thank my colleagues for attending, including Counselors Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Mehea, Counsel Louie Jean, and Counsel Orell. At the working session, we discussed the recent salary levels of our city council staff, including recent increases to the budget in order to right-size our staff salary to make sure it's more competitive, retain talent, and better compensate our hard-working staff. We also discussed comparative salaries from other city departments and from other cities and the cost of living in our city. We also discussed paid time off, family leave, and budget for hiring when that staff member is on active duty. Counselors still have questions regarding data from historic city council staff budget salaries for similar positions and other related data. We all agree that our staffs are indispensable, that they should earn a fair wage for all the work they do. I believe we still have work to do to come to a common ground that will allow us to offer good wages while being fiscally responsible. I also believe that Counsel Fernandez Anderson will come back with more information as well. And city council central staff is doing some research on some issues that came up during this hearing. At this time, I do want to give City Councilor Fernandez Anderson the opportunity to speak, if that's okay.
Thank you, President Flynn. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President Flynn, for allowing me to speak on this, but also for hosting or for holding the working session. Essentially, Counsel President Flynn has been a strong advocate to increase the council staff budget in order for us to be able to actually pay people what they should be getting paid. I propose that they, that everyone, based on cost of living, based on housing market, based on just overall credentials and the level of work here, comparing it to New York and other cities, comparing the job duties. We heard from our colleagues, and as Counsel President Flynn mentioned, there were different points about whether it was a bigger office, or more staff, or less work. And so we are looking into data to specifically figure out whether we should be increasing council administration staff every other year, and then alternating that with the council staff as well, so that the pay increase matches with the inflation it increases. So I look forward to going back to the working session and working with Counsel President Flynn. My suggestion is that everyone that works for us, that our council staff make a minimum of $72,000 a year, and that begins with the lower-level position, and then that our chief of staffs have a standard so that we can actually codify it, but that to leave the decision-making to discretion of the counselors in terms of, you know, measuring qualifications, looking at where people are coming in in terms of their, again, qualifications and experience, but that the range, and I'll just give you a couple, the range for chief of staff should go from a very minimum entry level or lesser qualifications of $72,000 baseline, all the way up to $103,000 a year. And that we should not be looking at comparing our salaries as city counselors with our staff. We know that increasing our budget for our pay is contentious, or it's controversial, and, you know, people will come out, all the trolls on Twitter might start saying that city counselors are politicians and greedy, and therefore wants to pay themselves a lot of money, not taking into consideration that you take home really like $75,000, and four of us here are single parents. But this is not about us. Again, we shouldn't compare what we get paid to our staff, and our staff go above and beyond and work probably, our chief of staffs most likely work a good between, on a good day, 50 hours a week, on a good week, and then most of the times, 50 to 60 to 70 hours a week, and we know that. We know that they are qualified. We talked about that most of them are either attorneys, or that they have high qualifications, and they come in and they put in the work, and they put in the heart, and that we should pay them, but not just because we care about them and the work, but also because of the cost of living. We looked at data that showed that, you know, whatever way of paying people now, like some chief of staffs make $75,000, or, I don't know, I looked at the numbers, and some people are making 70, some people are making like, at the most I saw was, I think, $80,000. And then that's considering, like, if you give your staff a bonus, but still, there's a 26% tax on bonuses, so essentially, they'd have to pay taxes on that again later when they file their taxes, so it doesn't really make a lot of sense, and we're just going to keep it really plain. The point is, is that we're not paying our staff properly, and again, I'll say it here, if we love people and we care about people, we respect them, and if you respect them, we pay them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. This docket, 0405, will remain in committee.
Thank you, Counsel Brayden. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0144, 0443, and 0611 together, please?
Document number 0144. Order for a hearing to discuss pest control in the City of Boston. And document number 0443. Order for a hearing to discuss trash contracts and procedures in Boston. And document number 0611. Message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant from the Recycling Dividend Program awarded by the Mass. Environmental Protection Division, to be administered by the Public Works Department. The grant will fund curbside recycling and other programs and policies proven to maximize reuse, recycling, and waste reduction.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Buck. Counsel Buck, you have the floor. Are you going to read them, are you going to discuss them all at the same time?
I'd love to discuss them all at the same time, and then I'll have a proposal for one of them.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Buck.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you so much to the counselors who joined us for this omnibus hearing on all things trash, rats, and recycling. It was, I was joined by my colleagues, many of them cosponsors of the various dockets, so President Flynn, Counsel Louie Jean, Counsel Brayden, Counsel Coletta, and then Counsel Murphy as well, and it was a really good conversation. We had Public Works represented by Dennis Roach here, Code Enforcement represented by John Blackmore, and then John Ulrich from Environmental Services at ISD, and just, I think, had a really good integrated conversation. What the committee's found over the last few years is that since rats and, you know, code enforcement needs are really the downstream results of, you know, how trash is being managed kind of upstream at Public Works, it really makes sense to have everybody at the table talking together. And there was a particular focus on the, you know, upcoming renewal of, we're in a five-year trash contract, and the new RFP for the next trash contract needs to get finalized this fall. And so a lot of the ways in which in our neighborhoods the trash contract isn't working ideally have kind of crystallized, and part of the goal, and Public Works is hiring a trash fellow to work on this, but part of the council goal has really been to use this moment to make sure that we have the best system for the residents of Boston and for really improving quality of life. From my perspective, in my part of the city, there's a particular focus on how to shift the dynamic in neighborhoods where we don't have consistent containerization of trash, where trash is out overnight in thin bags, because it really is just like telling the rats, "Come and get it." And we know they're nocturnal, and we know they can chew through two-ply plastic bags. So, you know, I think we had some really good conversation about possibly having some more tailored approaches to those parts of the city, you know, ideally from my perspective, getting it to be that in the places where we don't have containerization, trash is only going out during the day, and it's just not sitting out overnight. Because as John Ulrich, you know, raised to us again and again, although the ISD folks do an amazing job going out and baiting public areas, the, you know, baiting is that downstream solution, and the more that we can remove the food source from the rats, the better. So we also talked about the composting program and the way in which that's pulling some of the organic food that the rats most desire out of those trash bags and into a separate stream, and kind of talked about the ongoing need to grow that program and make sure that the city's got the backend and to handle it. So there were a lot of really good questions asked by counselors. It's a big focus, I think, for many of us, and I think, you know, an area where we're really working in partnership with the departments. I think, you know, just like we continue to pull together the different departments in these hearings, I think one of the things that was expressed was a desire for the departments to really have an interdepartmental working group on this and not to be in a situation because, again, rats, you know, they don't know if they're on public or private, they don't know if it's ISD or PWD, so kind of how do we have a joined-up plan of attack was a big... was a big part of the conversation. But it was, yeah, it was a great hearing, and we were also joined by a lot of residents, and so I just really want to thank the many residents who came out and testified. Again, it's a huge quality of life issue, and folks had thought a lot about potential ways to make it better. So, definitely a topic of ongoing conversation, and for dockets, sorry, I don't have their numbers up, for two of the dockets, docket 0144 and docket 0443, going to be looking to keep those in committee. But for docket 0611, we also had Dennis Roach from Public Works address that recycling docket, so that's actually a grant that the Mass DEP gives us each year, and it's grown from $80,000 to $100,000. That's kind of a reward grant for the various recycling programs that the city runs, so especially things like the hazardous waste drop-off days, and like the other kind of tailored approaches. We hold all those events, and then DEP gives us this grant in acknowledgement of that. So, that's this grant, and so I will be recommending, Mr. President, that docket 0611 ought to pass today. But just, again, really want to thank colleagues, and it was, for me, as City Services Chair, departing soon, a very satisfying hearing to have and conversation to focus on together for a few hours yesterday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bock. Would anyone like to discuss this matter, especially the sponsors? Well, I'll take a, I'll take a brief minute to discuss it. Just want to say thank you to Council Bock and the sponsors for coming together, and the city administration staff for working with us on these critical public health, public safety issues that are impacting every neighborhood across the city. I proposed a, and there's so many different departments that are involved in pest control, such as ISD, Water and Sewer, Public Works, the parks, everyone's doing their part on pest control, but I recommended having a pest control czar that would oversee the whole operation, so everybody's working together under one office on this critical issue. New York City is doing excellent work on this. I'm going to visit New York City in the near future to explore their pest control operation, but these quality of life issues are critical, and as we approach the budget, these are the quality of life issues that really matter to residents across the city. So, I want to say thank you to the, to my colleagues and the city administration team for the excellent work they're doing, but we need to do more. So, docket 0144 and 0443 will remain in committee, and Council Bock seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0611. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Quirk, can we read docket 0342, please?
Docket number 0342, order for a hearing to discuss the recovery and revitalization of the taxi industry.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Baker, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a hearing yesterday, docket 0342, on the revitalization of the taxi industry. It was attended by the co-sponsor, Council Lara. Council Flynn was there, hold on, let me just look at my notes, that's best. Council Murphy was there, and we had a letter that was read into the record from Council Louie Jen that she could not attend. Captain James Gargan was there from the Police Department to discuss changes in 403, which is Hackney, which governs the taxi industry. And Commissioner Emily Shea was there to talk about the coupon program, known formally as the CHITS program, is what the old people would discuss. And from the industry, we had Linda Garofalo from the Taxi Alliance, Dan Iger from Way Forward Taxi, Steve Goldberg, a taxi medallion holder, Kelly Driscoll, Independent Taxi Association, and Andy Summers, a taxi medallion holder. We went through everything from electrified vehicles and what that would do to save the city and carbon imprint. We talked about, we talked about the amount of vehicles that are coming into the city, around 200,000 a day for Uber and Lyft. Now, think of 200,000 cars, we wonder why the streets are like that, there's 200,000 additional cars just looping the block here. There's things we could do, like reinstating the taxi stands, which are all filled with Uber and Lyft. Different things that we talked through, it was a good hearing overall. There's some money that happened through state legislation, I believe it was about three years ago, which all came in the form of grants, which the Public Health Commission applied for, and it was basically transportation. I didn't, I don't see anything that went directly to the taxi industry. Now, these, these people are all small business owners, most of them immigrant owners, and this was a way to achieve the American dream, and that was because of big business, because of big technology, they come in and crushed the taxi industry, and we, the city of Boston, sat by complacent, going back a couple mayoral administrations, did nothing at all to help the taxi industry. I do believe there is some hope for the taxi industry, because now you can get a medallion for around $20,000, and you become your own boss, but there's still challenges within that, and I think one of them, one of them can potentially be, if we have the discussion around electrifying the entire taxi industry, might be a way for us to speak about the environment and get people interested in shopping local. If you shop local, you're jumping in a taxi, that the money's staying in Boston someplace. And with that, I would like to pass it over to the lead sponsor, Council Lara, for her comments and what she thought of the hearing yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will remain in committee.
Yeah, thank you, Council Baker. The Chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to the Chair and my co-sponsor for making sure that we held this hearing before the budget season started. I think that, in addition to what Councilor Baker shared, there is really an opportunity here to revitalize. There are places where we can't turn back what has already happened, but particularly when it comes to taxis, there are niche areas where they are still necessary. They have handicap-accessible vans and cars, which you don't see often, and there's really an opportunity to make them available, whether it be use them at hospitals, and so on and so forth, in ways that can really help increase the amount of income that some of the medallion holders are bringing in. We talked about having a working session for Rule 403, and really modernizing the process. And so, we're talking about really making it easier for people to purchase a medallion, modernize that entire process, really change the reputation of taxis in the city of Boston, so that people feel like they want to use that as an option, more than they use the Uber and Lyfts. And to Councilor Baker's point, we heard that there are around 200,000 Uber and Lyft cars, like TNCs, in the state, and that over half of those rides start here in the city of Boston, and 75% of them end here. And so, I think that when we talk about how many cars are on the road, when we talk about carbon emissions, having the majority of all of the TNC cars that are in the state really coming in and out of the city of Boston, Cambridge, has really been taking some steps forward to mitigate how many of the cars are allowed in the city, and I think that that's also another possibility of some of the things that we can do here. The taxi drivers didn't have access to any of the small business loans, and a lot of the supports that we had through ARPA and throughout COVID, and so we also wanted to make sure, unfortunately, the hearing happened at the same time as Mel King's funeral yesterday, and so it was difficult to get a lot of the cabinet here, but we're hoping that we can have other hearings where we bring small business and economic opportunity to really talk about how we can make sure that these small business owners, small medallion owners, people that own, you know, anywhere from one to three medallions, can really have access to the small business support that we have here in the city of Boston. I think the thing that is the most salient to me, somebody came and gave public testimony, and they presented the taxi industry as being an integral part of our public transportation infrastructure. And that really stuck with me, because a lot of the drivers here were like, you know, the time between picking somebody up and dropping somebody off is really precious for taxi drivers, and so they talked about being able to use the bus lanes, and so on and so forth, and just really thinking about how can we get creative, and at minimum, stop hurting the industry if there is something, you know, a competition right now that's really difficult for them to keep up with. We had an incredible amount of taxi drivers that came to testify, I think maybe, what, 40, 40, 50 people were here, they filled up, they filled up the chambers, and they really let us know that they were, one, struggling, that they needed the support of the city, and that there's a lot of pain points that would make it much easier for them and their families to be successful. So, I'm really grateful to Councilor Baker, and I look forward to continuing to move this project forward.
Thank you, Council Lara. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? I'll speak briefly on it. Just want to say thank you to Council Baker and Council Lara for their work in supporting the taxi industry. Certainly, it's not a sexy issue to discuss, but you are supporting people of color that are owners of these medallions. Many of them are immigrants, as Council Baker stated, they're trying to support their family, and just want to acknowledge and respect the work that you're doing in support of these immigrant families across the city. One final point I will make is, the taxi industry is supervised, oversaw by the Hackney Division at the Boston Police Department. The Uber and Lyft, 200,000 and 100,000 that come into the city of Boston, they're not overseen by the Boston Police. They're actually overseen by the State Department of Public Utilities, and not sure how many inspectors they have at that division, but just something, something to consider. This docket, 0342, will remain in committee. Motions, orders, and resolutions, Mr. Quirk? I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes Council Bock. Council Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd ask to invoke Rule 16 and pull from the consent agenda 0803 for consideration out of order at this point, and just so folks know, this is related to the Library Workers Day, and we have Alyssa Cadillac here from the library workers, and so, Mr. President, if you would allow that.
Mr. Quirk, Council Bock is requesting that we invoke Rule 16 to move docket 0803 to motions, orders, and resolutions, which would be taken out of order. Is there a second?
Second.
We now have a second, and docket 0803 is now under motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Quirk, can you please read this docket, 0803, into the record?
Docket number 0803, Councilor Bock and Braden, Councilors Bock and Braden offer the following: Resolution recognizing April 25th as National Library Workers Day.
The Chair recognizes Council Bock. Council Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now, Mr. President, I'd like to invoke Rule 12 and ask to include yourself as a third original cosponsor.
Hearing no objection. Council Fernando's added, the Chair recognizes Council Bock.
Thank you. So, National Library Week is April 23rd to April 29th in 2023 nationwide, and this resolution before us today is to name specifically April 25th as Library Workers Day here in the city of Boston, really an acknowledgement of our incredible Boston Public Library staff. You know, as it lays out in the resolution, you know, over the past year, they've served over 2 million visitors, circulated almost 4 million e-resources, put 6,000 Chromebooks and 3,000 Wi-Fi routers in patrons' hands, hosted over 700 programs, system-wide for all ages, and I think we, on the council, all know that they're really, I mean, they're truly frontline staff, and they're frontline staff in making the city feel welcoming to all. And, you know, our libraries really are these little portals into access to knowledge and resources, and art, and just all kinds of opportunities for our residents in every neighborhood, and these staff really, you know, did tremendous work pivoting during COVID to make sure that people could continue to access library resources, and they're just very valuable to us here in the city of Boston. So, we wouldn't want them to go unacknowledged locally during this national week of recognition. So, again, this is a resolution to name April 25th Library Workers Day, and I do hope that councilors will join us in suspension and passage today, and thank you to councilors Braden and Flynn, and to Alyssa, and the whole, the whole ASME union of library workers, but I just really want to use this moment to express our appreciation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Bock. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Council Bock for including me as an original cosponsor on this. It's a very great pleasure to recognize the library workers in our city. We are very fortunate in my district, District 9, to have the Honan Library, the Brighton Center Library, and the Faneuil Branch Library, which is closed at the moment for renovations. And all across the city, these library spaces provide, are neutral spaces for folks to gather and community. The libraries in our neighborhood almost function as mini-community centers, where people gather and discuss and deliberate and meet and have fun and support each other and have access to technology and all sorts of services. Librarians are a very inventive group of people. When they see a need, they put their heads together, and they try and find, try and come up with responses to meet community need, and that's something I really appreciate. We saw that very much in evidence during the COVID pandemic, when they really went the extra mile to try and ensure that residents had access to library services while still not, by not actually being able to be in a physical building. So, I very much want to appreciate all the great work that they do, and to thank our library workers across the city for the amazing work that they do. I also want to give a shout-out to the Friends groups across that support our city librarians. We have, we see that in our local library, I'm sure everyone in their district has Friends groups that support their libraries, and, again, that's really that, where the collaboration and partnership between the Friends groups and the librarians makes our city dollars go an extra mile, in many cases, and meet community needs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. And not to take away at all from our library and ASME union workers, but I did just want to shout out, and it may be appropriate, to also uplift our librarians at our Boston Public Schools and our schools across the city also. They are such a crucial part in the education of our students, integral part of the staff in every building, and, you know, wrap our children in books and knowledge, and as we know, in 2023, also the technology that's necessary for all of our children to access education. So, if it's okay, I just wanted to take a moment to shout out the librarians at our schools also. So, thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jen. Council Louie Jen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleagues for putting this resolution forward. I believe it was Council Braden that said our libraries are like community centers, and I talk often about how, at the Lower Mills Public Library, I spent a lot of my childhood, and my librarians were basically like quasi-babysitters, and so for me, it holds a very special place for me and my sisters. I recently attended Boston Public Library Trustees Meeting, where the librarians are right now talking about a surveillance, a video surveillance policy that is being considered, and our librarians deserve all the protections that they feel safe in our libraries that are limited public forum, so that we do need to think about the First Amendment when thinking about the rights that people have, the recording rights that they have when entering the space, but as a limited public forum, we also have to think about the safety of our librarians in these spaces. Too often, we saw last year, subject to, our librarians were subject to a lot of bad actors and people entering with bad intentions, and it's not just the protection of our librarians that we need to consider, it's also our patrons, who are going in and taking out books about sexual identity or gender identity, and want to feel safe in our libraries, and want to feel safe from recording. So, I was really encouraged at the Board of Trustees, all the members seem to be, to take the librarians' considerations to heart, and going to really be reviewing the draft policy put forward by the administration, and so I just thank the librarians for the heightened level of scrutiny that they're working under right now, as our democracy's under attack, but also with their concern for making sure that our libraries remain these sacred spaces for folks who either need it as a community center, or need it as a place to research themselves, or just need a place to sit. It's incredibly important that we continue the work of supporting you, and you have my commitment to continue doing that, and making sure that we adopt a policy that puts our librarians and patrons at the center. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jen. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Quirk, can you please add Council Royal? Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counselor Royal, Counselor Baker, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louise Jean, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Wrell, Counselor Bock, Counselor Brayden, and Counselor Flynn, seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of Doc at zero eight zero three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the Doc at has been adopted. We're on to Doc at zero seven eight nine.
Document number zero seven eight nine. Counselor Flynn offer the following. Order for a special preliminary municipal election for District Eight City Council on June twenty seventh, 2023, and special municipal election on July twenty fifth, 2023.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Brayden. As you know, our good friend and colleague, Counselor Bock, will be resigning her City Council seat on April twenty eighth. So we, we need to have a special election to fill the seat for District Eight. I'm filing this order today so that we can formally call for a special preliminary election and special municipal election for District Eight, which will be on June twenty seventh and July twenty fifth, respectively. I ask that we refer this to the Committee of the, of the whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Counselor Royal, Counselor Bock, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louise Jean, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Wrell, and Counselor myself, Counselor Brayden. Doc at zero seven eight nine will be referred to the Committee on Rules and Administration.
Thank you, Counsel Brayden. Mr. Clerk, we're going to make one correction, one minor correction to that that will be assigned to the Committee on the Hall. Thank you, Counsel Brayden. Mr. Clerk, please read Doc at zero seven nine zero.
Document number zero seven nine zero. Counselor Mahia offer the following. Order for a hearing to discuss youth outreach and engagement in Boston Public Libraries.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it seems like it's a library kind of date today, yes. So the Boston Public Library has an important history in Boston, being the first free public library in the country and serving the community for over a hundred and seventy-five years. The Boston Public Libraries are one of the few free and accessible places that provides entertainment and activities for people of all ages. It is a place where families can come together to learn and explore, particularly important for families who may not have the means to access other forms of entertainment or activities outside of their home. It is also a space that welcomes youth, providing them with an opportunity to engage in supervised recreational fun. However, accessibility is limited by the Boston Public Library's hours of operation, as well as the fact that different branches offer different services. BPL branches other than the Central Library close at five P M. or at six P M. on weekdays. This means that an average of forty hours a week employee or students that participate in after-school sports and activities may not be able to visit the library during the week. Additionally, most branches are only open for a few hours on Saturdays and are closed on Sundays, limiting the opportunities for family to visit the library on weekends. The Central Library is the only branch open on Sundays and hosts disproportionately more events than other branch, branches across the city. There are four hundred and nineteen events at the Central Library compared to fourteen to a hundred and sixty-two at local branches. This suggests that entertainment and accessibility for tourists is prioritized. It is extremely disheartening situation as working residents of Boston contribute to the economy but are unable to fully access the services offered by the B, Boston Public Libraries. The Boston Public Library cannot just be the place where individuals go to get books, but has the place of, of community, cultural celebration, civic duty, and safe fund. Investing in libraries means investing in the capabilities of our youth, allowing them to engage in activities that encourage lifelong learning, creativity, and civic engagement can have a positive impact on their future success and well-being. As the saying goes, "It takes a village to raise a child", and the Boston Public Library can serve as an important part of that village. We recognize that Mayor Wu's budget proposed to increase the BPL hours of operations and renovate three branches, and we are really grateful for her initiative. Expanding hours of operation and scope of service offered, such as homework help, career services, community support, commits Boston to a high-quality deliver, delivery of service and promotes equity within the city. And I grew up going to the Fields Corner Library when I was a kid, and, you know, the, the point of when you're working, even when you're in high school, whether you're participating in sports, I didn't have the luxury of doing that. I had to work right after school. So not having access to a place where after I got done with work, I can go and, and, you know, grab a book or, or do some studying was difficult. So I know that there is something to be said of thinking about non-traditional hours for everyone to have access. So looking forward to this hearing and seeing what we can do on the council to support the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Bock. Counsel Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Counselor Mahia for filing this and also to just express my real thanks to the BPL staff. And including at the Central Branch, we actually, as folks probably know, there's a teen center at the Central Branch. And they've been really critical partners with our students at the Snowden, in particular, which has a, an open campus, like where it's got three different sites that kind of like are a constellation around the library. And I think that the, the partnership with the library has been really crucial, and especially with some of the, like, social disruption that's happened for our students over, over the course of the pandemic. They're, they're a key partner. So just really think that, like, the opportunity to have more of these teen services everywhere in the city is super valuable. And then just also expressing the feeling, you know, in the West End, in my district, there's, there's no school or B C Y F, et cetera. So really, the children's services that get offered at the West End Library are kind of like where the city meets families in the district. And that's also why people are advocating for a library branch over in the Fenway, because we don't have that. And so that's been a big driver of the effort to still have a bus that will run people to the Central Library. So I just really wanted to thank Counselor Mahia for filing this and just express as a district counselor, as I'm sure other district councilors feel, how, how critical these services are to our residents. Thanks. And please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Bock. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bock, Counselor Brayden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louise Jean, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Wrell. Please add the Chair. And I also want to thank Counselor Mahia for this important hearing order as our libraries bring us together as a community and provide tremendous services to the residents of Boston. So I want to say thank you to Counsel Mahia for bringing this forward. Doc at zero seven nine zero will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Doc at zero seven nine one?
Document number zero seven nine one. Counselors Lara and Arroyo offer the following. Order for a hearing regarding the potential usage of city-owned land for off-leash dog parks.
Thank you. The Chair, the Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. Dog parks. I am here to talk about dog parks. So one, I just wanted to lift up that Counselor Arroyo has filed, a couple of years ago at least, filed a similar hearing. And so I'm very happy to be partnering with him on this issue. In my district and all across the city, really, during the COVID nineteen pandemic, we saw a sharp increase in the amount of dog owners all across the city, mostly because people were incredibly isolated and they were looking for some level of companionship. In Jamaica Plain specifically, has the highest per capita of dog ownership in the city of Boston. We have long, as a city and as a council, have been really committed to ensuring that people have access to parks. Right now, everybody in the city of Boston lives within a one-mile radius of a public park. And I think one of the main issues is, what do those parks look like? Who are they accessible to and who is able to use them? We don't have that many off-leash dog parks. I think in the city of Boston, we have about six. And there is a new one that's coming to Jamaica Plain. I think the problem that we're running into is that neighbors are really concerned about having dog parks because there are so, there's such a small amount of dog parks across the city. People are worried that the dog parks in their neighborhoods or that their playgrounds and parks are really going to become destination parks for people from all over the city to come and use as a dog park. And that's an issue for a number of reasons, mostly cleanliness, noise, and so on and so forth. So last year, we received a report from the administration that gave us a public land audit and ultimately audited all of the city-owned land that we have all across the city. Out, from that land audit, there are about two hundred and sixty-one parcels that are either too small or awkwardly shaped to be developed, meaning that we can't really build anything out on those parcels. And so I have been in conversations with the administration and Counselor Arroyo about exploring the possibility to use some of these parcels that we can't really develop for off-leash dog parks. I think that that would increase the saturation of dog parks all across the city and every neighborhood, and it's going to really help alleviate some of our constituents' concerns around where dog parks are, how close they are to homes, and so on and so forth. So obviously, I'm a big supporter of dog parks. I think every neighborhood should have at least a few where people can bring them. And I think that using public land and really looking at the land audit is going to help us get to where we need to go. So I'm happy to bring this on the floor, and I'm excited to have yet another dog park here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have dogs, but also it was in the having of dogs that I was introduced to dog parks and sort of the communities that they bring together. But as a counselor, I'm very aware of, and we receive emails to the fact of unleashed dogs in parks, dog waste, all of these different things that can be sort of handled and, and funneled towards dog parks where you actually create a safe and fun environment, not just for animals who deserve them, but also for those communities of dog owners who are seeking that kind of community, community and fellowship. It gives a safe space for animals to play with one another. I know in my district, there are no dog parks. There's, I think, an additional, since we've had this hearing, I think two went up in Dorchester. I believe another one is coming to Jamaica Plain, or there are talks to bring one to Jamaica Plain. But Rosendale, Mattapan, and High Park still do not have any. In the places where these exist, they are maintained by those community groups, so it does not cost the city any money in that sense. They're maintained by private organizations that then clean up and, and do all of that because I think the, that speaks to the level of desire and the level of teamwork that we are getting from residents of the city of Boston to make sure that these things become a reality. I think we should have one in every neighborhood. And I think it's just a matter of finding the appropriate space in each neighborhood to do that. But I look forward to having a hearing about what we are doing to sort of focus in on where we can put these as we try to serve the needs of not just the residents of the city of Boston, but also their, their animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just wanted to make a point on the record that when we look at building dog parks and really the size that they need to be, there's, there's a recommended size, anywhere from seven thousand five hundred square footage. And so I mentioned the two hundred and sixty-one lots. All of them are not of that size. But I just wanted to kind of paint a more vivid and accurate picture of how many of the plots that we have in the city are going to be, we're going to be unable to develop. I don't think that dog parks are the only uses for them. I think maybe other kinds of green space in parks I would also be open to, but just wanted to put it out there because I wanted to clarify that all of them cannot be used for a dog park.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. Would anyone like to sponsor this? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Bock, Counsel Brayden, Counsel Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counselor Louise Jean, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Wrell. Doc at zero seven nine one will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, please read Doc at zero seven nine two.
Document number zero seven nine two. Counselor Murphy offer the following. Order for a hearing to address possible violations of the redistricting committee.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn. I believe we need to focus on re-establishing trust, not just here in the chamber among colleagues, but with our constituents. We all share a covenant of service with them. Our processes here on the City Council of deliberation and debate do more for the common good when they are open, transparent, and inclusive. This time, it was redistricting. But if we continue in this manner, I believe it could happen with any other committee. And it is very dangerous precedent to set. We must be vigilant about fairness, inclusion, and respect for each other and for the residents of the city of Boston that all of us represent. So Counsel President Flynn, I'm looking forward to this hearing that I will be sponsoring. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone looking to speak on this matter? Please let me know. I will allow people to speak, anyone that wants to speak on this matter, but I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this matter because this, this top, topic will be discussed in committee. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn.
I, I got it.
Thank you. This is a refile, so it's a little different in form and function this time around. But I just want to go on record in support of Counsel Brayden and her staff for the great work that they did under an incredibly strenuous time. I was witness to, everyone here was witness to the level of personal attack and conversation that frankly was uncivil throughout this process that she endured, that her staff endured. I think it's inappropriate that we are continuing to paint Counsel Brayden, Counsel Brayden's committee, the work that Counsel Brayden did, the work that her staff did in some nefarious light. I would also want to note that in these hearing orders, it paints the N double A C P, Ward fourteen, Ward twelve, Ward eighteen as nefarious or having done something behind the scenes or illegally or anything beyond just a constituent actually emailing our offices. And I think it's inappropriate to try to paint constituent emails to councilors as something that shouldn't happen or doesn't happen. I think every member of this council receives constituent emails. Some of them are very nice, some of them can be incredibly uncivil. Some of them can propose or say things about different policies. I recently put forward a nip ban. You should see some of the emails I'm getting on that. Or rather, a singles or miniatures ban. You see some of the emails I'm getting on that. And so from the stance of just this hitting the floor and, and having this conversation, I just want to make it clear to Counsel Brayden and her staff that I am deeply appreciative of the work that they did during a very difficult time and a difficult process and the way that they shepherd that through. I believe that all of that was done in a way that was transparent. And I think as a body where we have members of this council who have funded a lawsuit, who have testified in court on behalf of that lawsuit, to try and litigate a matter that is being litigated in the courts in this, in this chamber is not a precedent that I think we should be setting, is not something that we should be doing moving forward. And so I just couldn't let this come up without being clear about the fact that I believe this council should stand by its process. Nine members of this council voted for that map that went through a very public process, so much of a public process, that we had those hearings in this room where they could be recorded, where they can be seen, as other members of this council asked to go to a back room where it wasn't recorded. And so I think from the standpoint of what this process did, I know that it's now March, I think, it's actually April, and we're still litigating this. And so I just think this is an attempt essentially to litigate something in this chamber that shouldn't be done in this chamber when we're trying to move forward with, with actual city business.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Let me say, let me, let me say it again. I don't know if I, if I was clear. This, this is going to be discussed in the committee. It's going to be discussed in a, in a hearing. I'm not going to allow this time to divide people. This will be discussed again in a committee meeting. So I'm going to give everyone the opportunity to speak, but we're not going to divide the body today. We can speak very briefly, but I do expect everybody to show up at the City Council hearing when we have it. We don't have, we haven't done a good job of being present at a lot of these hearings either. So that's where these hearings are discussed, not in the Wednesday meeting. The chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I'm going to allow everyone to speak for a minute or so. I allowed Counsel Royo to speak an extra couple of minutes, but I want to keep everybody to a minute. I'm not going to let this meeting get out of hand. The chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counselor Braden, Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
So I learned a term over the last couple of weeks, and it was the line-drawing bodies. That's us. We were the line-drawing bodies. We weren't all involved in that process. I know we say it was transparent and everything. It was far from transparent, Mr. President. We are the line-drawing bodies, not the paid advocates. They're not the line-drawing bodies. We are. And there were, and there was a lot of things that happened here. I wasn't invited to any of the meetings where we were talking about me, about my district, about District 3. So I just got to go and say that. And was it uncivil? There were people that were being mistreated there, and they knew they were being mistreated. We are the line-drawing bodies. We, the City Council, should have drawn those lines, and we did not draw those lines. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Let me repeat myself again. This matter will be discussed in the hearing. This body has not been showing up to City Council meetings like we should have. We have a lousy record attendance-wise, but we'll finish this, we'll finish this one here. But we need to discuss this in a council hearing. This is really not the place to do it. But the chair recognizes Counsel Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. You know, this, as Chair of the Redistricting Committee, we had, I had my, our first working session was virtually on September 16th, Friday. And at that working session, I informed all the attendees that the chair met with and would continue to meet with members of the Drawing Democracy Coalition, consisting of community organizations, voting rights advocates, researchers, and civil rights attorneys. The Coalition sought to advise an equitable and transparent redistricting process with community voice, and they helped mobilize residents to attend and participate throughout the process and the committee's more than 20 publicly noticed meetings, hearings, and working sessions that followed. Presentation slides from that working session described the collaborative role of the community-based organizations in advising the chair's redistricting process and were emailed to all counselors on Friday, September 16th, 2022, at 12:29 PM. While advocates were invited to participate in and advise the process, final action was ultimately taken by counselors themselves at our meeting of November 2nd, 2022. It's a little disturbing. Right now, we are all aware that the City Council is party to a federal complaint pending in the U.S. District Court of the District of Massachusetts, Walters et al. versus the City of Boston et al., Civil Action Number 22-CV12048. I want to note a few points made in the case by defendants' attorneys on behalf of this body, which are publicly available in the docket. It's a complex decision-making process required for redistricting, particularly given the Voting Rights Act demands local legislators will almost always be aware of racial demographics. I'm not going to go into the details of all this right now because we are going to have a discussion in committee. I think one of the biggest, there's a lot of insinuation that we have violated the vote, the open meeting law. Meetings hosted by community organizations, even if attended by a quorum of members, are not public meetings of the council or any of its committees if deliberation does not occur. The Law Department responded on the behalf of this body that it is the council's position that on October 10th, 2022, the event was not a meeting which required public notice, and meeting was organized by community organizations. And counselors in attendance introduced themselves, but otherwise, no council members spoke. Therefore, there was no deliberation. That is sort of the standard, no deliberation. Your attendance at a meeting doesn't necessarily mean there was a violation of open meeting law if there was no deliberation. Regarding the press conference hosted by the community organizations on October 12th, 2022, it is the council's position that the statements made at the press conference likely do not constitute deliberation, and therefore, the press conference was not a meeting as defined by the statute. Another quote is, "Those members present described the map introduced at the public docket of the council. Since it focused on presenting what has already been filed in the City Council, those statements do not constitute deliberation among the quorum of the committee." What I have to say is that if any of my colleagues would like to submit an open meeting law complaint, they may visit the website of the Attorney General's Division of Open Government, call 617-963-2540, or email openmeeting@mass.gov. If any of my colleagues would like to report a violation of a conflict of interest to initiate an investigation or enforcement procedures, they may also visit the website of the State Ethics Commission or call 617-371-9500.
Thank you, Counsel Braden.
Thank you.
Let me say it again, colleagues. This will be discussed in a City Council hearing that I will schedule, and I will make sure everyone has ample notice and an opportunity to weigh in. This isn't the, this isn't the time or the place to discuss this matter. The time and place to discuss the matter is in a City Council hearing. I'm trying to stress that to you. If it's absolutely critical for my, for the remaining colleagues to speak on this issue, I will allow it, but I don't want to divide the council any further than it's been divided already. If you have something critical that must be said at this time, I will allow it. But let me say again, it's, the discussion really needs to take place at the City Council hearing, and I expect everybody to show up there. No, not yet, not yet, Counsel. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. The chair recognizes, the chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Royo, go ahead, Counsel Royo. Go ahead, Counsel Royo.
There is no rule on the council books that allows us to moderate other counselors' language or conversations. The Rule 39 is specifically about people's ability to speak on the floor. It does have time limits, but it does not section or say that there is no ability for them to comment.
Thank you, Counsel Royo.
So if we are going to attempt to set rules, I would just like to know if the rule allows moderation of the content of any person here duly elected by their constituents?
Thank you, Counsel Royo. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Royo. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Go ahead, go ahead, finish your statement. I want to go forward with this meeting, Counsel Royo.
There's rules for the bodies. There are rules to point to that says that now...
We're in a brief recess.
Point of order is already answered.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not monitoring what people are saying, but I want people to be civil during this conversation. I don't want to divide the body. I want to move this body forward. I want people to be respectful to each other. I don't want to rehash old issues. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Can Counselor, Mr. President, thank you. Can Counselor Royo repeat what he said? I didn't hear him for, to be on record. I don't think the people at home heard him either.
Your mic.
Yeah. Do you want to do it now? He already spoke about what his reasoning was, but I do want to call on Counsel Mejia.
Yeah, I can answer.
All right. Yeah, the chair recognizes Counsel Royo.
Thank you. This is not an attempt to be divisive in any way, shape, or form. We are elected by our constituents. We're not allowed to speak. We were elected to speak. And when it comes to the rules for the City Council body, Rule 39 handles the ability to speak on this floor. The content of our speak, as long as it is not a personal attack, as long as it is not uncivil, is allowed. We are not allowed to be told to not speak about this or not speak about that. So I just want to be clear that though we can set time limits on the amount of time we're allowed to speak, the content of that conversation, whether you want to talk about it here or at the hearing, you're allowed to do so. And so I just want to make that clear for the public that there's no setting of benchmarks on what we're allowed to speak as duly-elected officials. And so that was my only thing. It doesn't give us carte blanche to be uncivil to each other or to call each other names. Rules on conduct for the body address that. But there is nothing on the rules or the council rules to moderate speech.
Counsel Mejia, did you want to speak? The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Now, I do appreciate my colleague really being super clear about how we are allowed to speak, right? We were elected by the people to speak for the people and to represent the people. So I think it's important for us to have that ability to do so. And I just want to be really clear. When I think about constituents and when I think about folks who are, who are in this space, you know, our job is to represent them and their voices and uplifting them. So I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Would anyone like to add their name to this? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Counsel Baker. This docket, 0792, will be referred to the committee on the whole. Mr. Clark, please read docket.
Point of order, Mr. Clark. I believe it should be assigned to the redistricting. And so I'm invoking Rule 4 from the State of Chicago. I disagree. I disagree. This is about the whole, Pam.
Excuse, excuse. We're going to take a quick, quick break, and I'm going to talk to, and brief recess. The chair recognizes the clerk.
It was my, yeah. Since there was an objection to the assignment of the docket to the committee of the whole by Counselor Arroyo, then our norm is that there's a motion to reconsider the assignment. So we're going to do a roll call on the reconsideration of the assignment.
And a yes vote is to reconsider the assignment.
Yes. Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Nay.
Counsel Baker, no. Counselor Bock. Counselor Bock, present. Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
No.
Counsel Flaherty, no. Counsel Flynn.
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Stee.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, no. And Counsel Rell.
Yes.
Counsel Rell, yes. The reconsideration has eight votes in the affirmative and one, two, three, four votes in the negative and one vote present. This docket, 0792, can be reconsidered for a reassignment to the committee of the redistricting.
Mr. Clark. This docket. This docket, 0792, will be reassigned to the Redistricting Committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0793. Mr. Clerk, could I ask all my colleagues to be respectful of each other as the clerk reads the next docket, please?
Docket number 0793, Counsel Flynn, offer the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F relative to Mocley Bridge-like holes in infrastructure.
Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. This is a 17F requesting more information relating to an accident that occurred on the Mocley Bridge in the South Boston waterfront last year, including information on repairs and inspection. We had a hearing recently on this issue, and I'm asking that we suspend and pass today. Thank you.
Counsel Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0793. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This order is passed. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, we're onto docket 0794.
Docket number 0794, Counselors Rurrell and Baker offer the following: Resolution declaring April 13th as Louis D. Brown Day of Civic Engagement.
The Chair recognizes... The Chair recognizes Counsel Rurrell. Counsel Rurrell, you have the floor.
I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Louis Jen as the original co-sponsor.
Counsel Louis Jen is added. The Chair recognizes Counsel Rurrell.
Louis D. Brown was born on April 13, 1978. He grew up to be a 15-year-old dedicated to pursuing his PhD and one day becoming the first Black president of the United States. During his life, he advocated for violence prevention, proclaiming that if true peace is to happen, it will be up to his generation, regardless of which side street they came from. Louis worked throughout his community, striving to build bridges and heal wounds. His inspiration has continued far beyond his tragic passing, carried forward by his parents, Joseph and Tina Cherry, and the Louis D. Brown Peace Institute. Here, they work tirelessly to support families and communities impacted by murder, trauma, grief, and loss. Louis believed that we all have a part to play in fostering a more peaceful world through our personal and collective civic engagement. It is in this spirit that I request that we declare April 13, 2023, as the first annual Louis D. Brown Day of Civic Engagement, and all join the Peace Institute in working towards a more collaborative, peaceful community. I'm looking for the support of my colleagues to suspend and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rurrell. The Chair recognizes Counsel Louis Jen. Counsel Louis Jen?
Oh, I didn't...
Were you speaking on this matter?
Yeah, I thought Counsel Baker was... Yep. Thank you to Counsel Rurrell for adding me as a co-sponsor on this. The work that the Peace Institute does is really phenomenal, and 30 years ago, there wasn't this infrastructure to really support families in this way. And now, the city refers families habitually to the Peace Institute. And beyond honoring their son's legacy, Clementine and Joseph Sherry decided to make a systemic change that worked to ensure that all survivors were treated with dignity and compassion, regardless of their circumstances or means. And so I'm just incredibly grateful to them for... They had a breakfast briefing recently talking about the work that they do, and we know that the Mother's Day Walk for Peace is coming up, and that they're holding an Advocacy 101 workshop in honor of Louis's birthday. And so we are incredibly grateful to the Peace Institute for their existence, for all the incredibly dedicated and committed staff. I was just talking to a mother who has been just relying on the Peace Institute to navigate loss and attorneys and everything of that nature. So joining my colleagues and recognizing April 13 as Louis D. Brown Day of Civic Engagement, also want to encourage my colleagues to join the Mother's Day Walk for Peace, and hopefully, we can express that support with our dollars, their fundraising, and hopefully, as a body, we're able to come together and make an expression of support for the work that they're doing to really respond to the needs of survivors and victims when they're experiencing tragedy. And so looking forward to the Day of Civic Engagement and the continued work of the Peace Institute. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louis Jen. I should have called on Counsel Baker as an original co-sponsor. I apologize. Counsel Baker?
No, Mr. President. I just want to thank Counsel Rurrell for allowing me to be part of the Louis D. Brown Civic Engagement. We all know of Tina's efforts in the Peace Walk and everything, so thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mehere. Counsel Mehere, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleague. Actually, Louis was a neighbor of mine, so I'm really incredibly grateful for Counsel Rurrell's relentless advocacy on behalf of the Louis D. Brown Peace Institute. In 1996, Tina Cherry was a keynote speaker at a youth conference that I organized here. And it was then in the early 90s that we really started to work collaboratively on all things that deal with youth engagement, violence prevention, and more importantly, supporting families through their trauma. And most recently, in 2010, worked alongside the Louis D. Brown Peace Institute on their walk. And in terms of civic engagement, I think one of the most important things is honoring the legacy of Louis through civic engagement. He was a youth leader in Teens Against Gang Violence, which is an organization that still is in effect under the leadership of Warwick Johnson. It just does... It's expanded its scope of services, but I just wanted to just rise and not only just lend my support, but my commitment to supporting anything that deals with the Louis D. Brown Peace Institute. Thank you, Counsel Rurrell. Unfortunately, I did not get to you on time to be one of the original co-sponsors, but I don't need to because Tina knows who I am, and they know that I'm all about them. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mehere. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter or sign on to it? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Bock, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Mehere, Counsel Braden, Counsel Murphy. Please add the Chair. Counselors Rurrell, Baker, and Louis Jen seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0794. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has been adopted. We're onto personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 795.
Docket number 0795, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Mehere.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0795. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We're onto late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are six... There are six late file matters. These include three personnel orders, an ordinance from Counsel Bock, a resolution from Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, and a 17F from Counsel Coletta. All these late file matters should be on everyone's desk at this time. Please let me know if they're not on your desk. I'll take a minute. We'll take a vote to add these items into the agenda. All those in favor of adding these late file matters into the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. These late file matters are added into the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter into the agenda, which is a personnel order.
Personnel order filed by Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This late file matter has been passed. Mr. Clerk, the second late file matter, please.
Personnel order filed by Counsel Flynn for Counsel Murphy.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This late file matter has been passed. Mr. Clerk, the third late file matter into the agenda, please.
Personnel order filed by Counsel Flynn for Counsel Bock.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This late file matter has passed. Mr. Clerk, the fourth late file matter is the ordinance from Counsel Bock. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bock at this time.
No, I have to...
Yeah, please read it into the record.
Offered by Counsel Kenzie Bock, ordinance amending the City of Boston Code, ordinance section 2-9.2 in regard to Council District 8.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Bock. Counsel Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And I just want to be clear with colleagues that I'm not seeking a vote on this matter today. This is in relationship to some of the elections data issues that I know some of you may have received an email from the Secretary of State's office on. Basically, the systems that Elections uses have already pushed through to reassign every Boston voter to a new precinct, the new precincts that were set over '21 and '22. And those were obviously the precincts that were used in the 2022 state elections. And so the challenge is that, well, the special election to replace my seat will be on the old district. The old precincts are not tagged to the voters anymore in the system, and so the challenge of going back to the old precincts is substantial. And so what this ordinance would do is it would still have the special election be for the old district, so it would still be people who were eligible to vote for District 8 in 2021 or eligible in 2023. But it would allow... It would clarify that Elections is allowed to use the new precincts. So for instance, in my district, there are folks in Beacon Hill who used to vote up at the State House. Now, with the new precincts, they vote down at Hill House. We don't want to send them back to the State House for two elections and then back to Hill House. And so that's basically the proposal, is to have it be that we use the new precincts, but inside the old district. That does require the creation of a few sub-precincts, but that's something that the Elections Commission is empowered to do and has frequently done when districts have changed with the old precincts. So the proposal today is just to get this filed, and then for Elections and the Secretary of State's office to be able to continue to have the administrative conversation over the next couple of weeks, because the special election order that Counsel Flynn introduced today can't be voted on until the next meeting anyways, as the clerk gave his notice today. So the idea is just for this to also come into council today and be part of that conversation, and if helpful, pass in either this or an amended draft at the same time as the special election order. But it's really a question of landing with Elections on the most efficacious, clearest way for voters to be informed about the special election process. And happy to chat at greater length, at whatever level of detail, about the RIS and the precincts and everything. But yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bock. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. You have the floor.
Mr. President, quick question through you to the maker. So are you looking to use the base map?
The Chair recognizes Counsel Bock on a question from Counsel Baker. I'm sorry.
The said base map.
Did you... Go ahead, Counsel Bock.
So by law, the special election to fill the vacancy created by my departure is for the 2012 district, because that's... Because it's not actually an election for the new term that starts in January. It's an election for the remainder of the term. So it is not... So it is a continuation of the existing district, yes. But it's not...
Can you answer the question? Are you looking to use the base map through the chair?
The Chair recognizes Counsel Bock...
No, I think... I believe that the question that my colleague is asking would only be correctly answered yes if you... No, no, no. No, it's not yes. No.
Excuse me. I'm only going to ask one person to speak at this time. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bock. Counsel Bock, you have the floor.
So by law, the special election is for filling out the 2021 term. So this is just doing... It's doing that. So no, it is not a reversion to the base map for the 2023 new seats, because for the 2023 new seats, the districts that would be used are the ones that were passed by this council in 2022. So it's a... There's a distinction that I'm making there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President...
The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
So 2012 maps, with the work that we did in reprecincting, would be in District 8 for this upcoming election. The reprecincted precincts would be in District 8.
Counsel Bock, would you want to respond to Counsel Baker's question, please?
Yeah, so basically, the idea would be that you have to stick with the...
That's a yes or no question.
Counsel Baker, excuse me. Excuse me.
Thank you.
I know. I only want...
It's a lot of words.
No, I know. But I only want one person to speak at a time. I want everyone to treat each other with respect here. But let me ask Counsel Bock... There was a question from Counsel Baker. I want to give Counsel Bock the opportunity to respond.
I'm sure my colleague wouldn't want me to confuse people by oversimplifying the matter. The... For example, in Ward 5 in my district, the same set of people are eligible to vote in District 8 as of 2021 and when we talk about the special now. However, some of those people were previously in differently numbered precincts before the reprecincting. So what this would do is it would keep the old 2021 limits the same, but it would have them going to their new polling location, so that people would continue to go to the same polling locations that they accustomed themselves to last year in 2022 and that they would be asked to go to in November. So it would be imposing the new precincts that were ratified by the Elections Commission over 2021 and 2022 on the old map for the purposes of the special. And then, obviously, it would be the new precincts with the new map for the purposes of the general election. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bock.
Again, Mr. President, I didn't get my... Once for yes, twice for no.
Thank you, Counsel Baker.
Looking to use the base map. Yes or no?
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor. The Chair recognizes...
Thank you. I just have a quick question.
Excuse me. I only want one person to speak at a time.
Sorry. I was having a private conversation. I thought it was private. Sorry, Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Yes. My question is why... Threw you to the maker of this, to Counsel Bock, why we need to do anything? Because if I understand you, which I think I do, it's just communication from the Elections Department to make sure people know where to actually bring their bodies on Election Day, or when they mail out the special election ballots, they will stay within the 2012 perimeter. Everyone who was able to vote for you in 2021 will be able to vote for every candidate who puts their name on the ballot for your special election. So I absolutely understand what you're saying. But my question is, why do we need this on the council when the Elections Department can do the work of just making sure they communicate to those who live in District 8 when and where they need to vote, so that everyone has access and easily access to your... To the ballots?
I'm going to recognize... There's a question on the floor from Counsel Murphy. I'm going to give an opportunity to Counsel Bock to respond, but I want to move forward after this, though. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bock. Counsel Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel Murphy, for the question. So the reason is because we... So many places, people describe districts by geographic boundaries, like they say, "to such and such street," et cetera. However, we have a historical practice in the council of describing districts based on wards and precincts. So what that means is that the 2012 districts were described using the old precincts. So the legal question is whether Elections has the authority to do, even though it's really a communications activity, whether basically, like, they are able to communicate the new precincts when the districts were described using the old precincts. So that's why this language says "for the purposes of a special election," and it defines District 8. It's the exact same geographic boundaries as 2012, but it translates it into new precincts. I think one could debate whether you really need this. I could put on a different hat and say, "I think Elections... The Board of Elections has all the authority that it needs to use the newly reprecincted precincts for the purposes of administration." But I think there is some legal debate about whether or not they do, and so in a kind of better safe than sorry perspective, this would be very clear that they did have that ability. So that's the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bock. Would anyone like to add their name to this? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Lara, Counsel Louis Jen, Counsel Mehere, Counsel Rurrell. Please add the Chair. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Rules and Administration. Mr. Clerk, please read the next late file matter into the agenda, which is the resolution from Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. I'm going to ask again for my colleagues, only one person can speak... I'm going to ask my colleagues if only one person can speak at a time, please. The Chair recognizes the clerk.
Offered by Counsel Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, resolution to commence making Eid El Fader a holiday recognized by the City of Boston. a holiday recognized by the City of Boston commencing in the year 2023.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. On a light and positive note, I hope, this is a refile for, to recognize Eid al Fajr as the holiday, municipal holiday for Muslims and all those who'd like to observe and celebrate with us. Eid al Fajr is the marking or the end of Ramadan, the month of Ramadan. And since I hadn't had the opportunity to read it into record, I'd like to just read a little bit about Eid al Fajr. We're incredibly fortunate to be a part of an evolving, diverse, cosmopolitan city that takes pride in catering to the inclusion of all people and their identities. And for many, religion can be a stronger facet of cultural identity as it is often more than just a set of practices, but a deep bond that ties communities together. And so, while Boston is home to 80,000 Muslims and counting and a number of Islamic Cultural Center, schools, mosques, and organizations, marginalization, continuing discrimination, and I just wanted to share a little bit about that. I myself, as a Muslim-practicing Sunni Muslim woman, have experienced physical assault, harassment, and discrimination on many levels over the last decade and continuing. So, I once had a woman who drove by me and threw a bowl of yogurt and fruit at my face and I was just parked in my car in traffic light. My Director of Constituent Service, actually, his daughter had girls and boys attack her daughter at school and pulled her hijab off and cut her braid. And she had a very long hair. And I had another sister, and I'll stop there, but I had another sister, or we call each other sister and brother, who at, just at back, just at South Bay last year, a man came and punched her on the back of her head and called her a terrorist. So, this happens often and the list of my experiences go on and on and on. And last year, you, the Council, my Council colleagues, supported me in passing this resolution to recognize Eid al Fajr as the municipal holiday. But it was very painful for me to stand here and, for the first time, a Muslim to recognize, to be recognized in the City of Boston for a lot of vitriol that came my way post-effect. But still, nonetheless, I am very grateful that I get to smile and I'm grateful that my colleagues here, the majority of my colleagues here, I'd probably say all of my colleagues, and that have never expressed anything contrary to these points and have always supported me as a Muslim. I just ask you that, as elected officials, that we not just support Muslims in this sort of, you know, I guess ritual way, but also to represent the Islamic community's issues, to advocate for them, and to also see them as your constituents. I think that oftentimes, a lot of the Councilors, what I've seen is I have never, I never really see my colleagues stand up and actually raise issues to address or advocate for the Islamic community. So, I'm asking, I'm imploring you to rise up, not literally today, but, and advocate with me. It's a community that's very closed in. It's a community that believes that prayer, of course, is stronger than anything. And so, culturally, we're adapted to not really speaking out. So, you can imagine the cultural change or assimilation that I had to go through in order to run for office. So, as the first Muslim, yes, American, Muslim-American to be elected in the City of Boston, I would like to say Eid Mubarak to all of the Muslims all over the world, but specifically in Boston, and Insha Allah, that we eventually make this an official holiday. Insha Allah that we are able to get our days off and you're not even from work and that you're not punished for taking the day off from work either. So, thank you for bearing with me, again, in my very mellow tone, and I invite you all to any festivities that we'll have. The festivities will last for three days, so hopefully you guys will join me. And I'm asking for suspension of rules and passage of this resolution. Thank you.
And thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counselor Bark, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Louie Jean, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Raul. Please add the chair. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson is seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This late file matter has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on Counsel Fernandez-Anderson's resolution. Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bark.
Aye.
Counsel Bark, aye. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Raul.
Yes.
Counsel Raul, yes. The resolution by Counsel Tanya Fernandez-Anderson has received a unanimous vote and the affirmative.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Before we go on to the next matter, the Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just through you, can move for reconsideration, my name added to Counsel Bark's late file?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Mr. Clerk, could you add Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. We're on to the next late file matter, which is a, is the 17F from Counsel Coletta. Mr. Clerk, can you read that into the record?
17F order filed by Counsel Coletta and Counsel Mahia, ordered under the provisions of section 17F, chapter 452 of the Acts of 1948, as amended in the other applicable provision of the law. The mayor be and hereby is requested to submit, to obtain and deliver to the City Council within one week of the receipt thereof the following information, information on the English-language learners at the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank my colleagues for their indulgence in allowing me to speak on this late file. I'm filing this 17F in partnership with Counsel Mahia after requesting data from BPS on an express and agreed-upon timeline that was not met. There is urgency here and as we enter budget season, I argue that we need to obtain this information expeditiously. BPS has an obligation to demonstrate compliance with federal equity requirements for Title I funds for English learner students, or EL students. Boston, and especially East Boston, is home to many new arrival students and those who do not speak English as their first language. Ahead of our budget conversations where we sit here and listen to BPS presentations for what seems like days, I'd like to have access to this data to cut through the noise as it is mandated by a consent decree to ensure that we are truly serving our EL students. A little bit of details on this meta consent decree. In 1992, BPS, BPS as a district, impairments of EL students represented by attorneys with the Multicultural Education Training and Advocacy Project, or the Meta Project, entered into a binding consent decree. The decree requires that Title I funds be used to benefit ELs to the same extent as other students. It commits BPS to, and I'm just going to name a few, improve and provide equal access to programs for EL students, adjust Title I school budgets for staff and services annually and periodically in light of changing student needs, meaningfully consult with and involve EL parents in each school, and, more importantly, report annually on the status of Title I services to EL students. As of today, all components of this equity compliance monitoring have not taken place. The required checklist produced by individual schools were never furnished by BPS. There are three sets of documents that I'm requesting. First, a budget plan that describes the needs of EL students and how the Title I services being described will address those specific needs. Second, at the end of the school year, BPS must share Title I checklist for each school showing how it actually spends the funds allocated in the respective schools during that year. And lastly, I'm requesting the details of the centrally-directed portion of these Title I funds. These are funds that go directly to central office, and ask for details of how ELs benefited equitably from those funds as well. To summarize, the Council and the public are entitled to review these checklists before the Council is expected to review the SY24 BPS budget. This is information that has been utilized by some of our colleagues in past BPS and budget discussions, and I think it would be beneficial for all of us to have this information so that we can effectively advocate on behalf of our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to thank Counsel Coletta for filing a request for Title I district dollars targeted to EL during school year between 2020 and 2023. Accountability is an essential part of promoting equity and being intentional about supporting Boston Public School students. It is not enough to state a dollar amount number without revealing how, where, when EL students are being supported to understand the full scope of the issue and how success can be achieved. This information will allow us to understand how dollars are being spent towards supporting English-language learners. We look forward to analyzing this, whether there are any areas of improvement in order to utilize each dollar to its fullest extent. It is essential to understand how the budget has addressed the social and educational needs of ELs. Receiving this data will ensure that we are making conscious and informed decisions regarding the $42 million in Title I for the next school year. And as an English-language learner myself, I think it's important, and as someone who has already filed a number of different hearings, that this is an opportunity for us to really look into the return on our investment in, you know, and I do agree with Counsel Coletta, oftentimes when we have the budget season, we come here with a lot of PowerPoint presentations and you'd need the Google Translate or the DaVinci Code to try to understand, dollar for dollar, how these investments are being had. And I think this level of scrutiny in terms of data will really help us prepare. So, looking forward to getting that information in a timely fashion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. Counselor, Counsel Coletta and Counsel Mahia seek suspension of the rules and adoption of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, we're on to green sheets. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. We're on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions, zero additions, to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is adopted. Today, we're going to adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For the entire City Council, William McCarthy, the father of City Councilor Tim McCarthy. A moment of silence, please. I'm going to ask if anyone would like to speak about a loved one, a constituent, family member that recently passed away. You can do so at this time. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to uplift that this weekend, and the next few days will be the 10th anniversary of the Marathon bombing. Martin Richard, who was eight, Crystal Campbell, 29, Lindsay Liu, 23, and a few days later, as we know, Sean Collier, who was only 26, were murdered 10 years ago, and I just want to uplift them here in the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair moves that when the Council adjourns today, we do so in memory of those individuals mentioned. We are scheduled to meet again in the Ayinella Chamber on Wednesday, April 26, 12:00 noon. I want to say thank you to the city clerk and the assistant clerk, the clerk's team, our City Council colleagues, City Council central staff, our court stenographer. All in favor of adjournment at this time, please say aye.
Aye.
The Council is adjourned.[1764.53]